Well, that and then, you know, we don't.
That might be so.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Today is June 20th, 2011, and I will call this meeting in the Norfolk City Council to order. It's an open meeting. Noted here in the northwest corner of this actual room is the actual Open Meeting Act there for anyone that wants to do a little reading. So, I will ask if you would please join us in a moment of silence and as well the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Uren?
Here.
Brenman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Yes, Your Honor. No, our council. That's moving forward as well. Phase two of the project has was approved last council meeting. Burbach Aquatics has given permission to the contractors to access to property after June 27th. That was a commitment that was made to the phase one part of it, and then the contractors believe they'll have boots on the ground and some action happening July 11th, if not sooner. There is some equipment down there and some supplies down there for the phase two portion of the project, but we have a great anticipation that that project continue, and once the phases start coming together, that we'll have a good relationship with all the contractors and all the activity that's happening down at Veterans Memorial Park. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on the project.
How's the schedule look right now with the rain we've been having?
Well, a little bit behind last we checked, Dennis, but they're trying to play some catch-up. They're working hard with all the sunshine we've been having, Councilman. So, it did put us all slightly behind, obviously, with some of the storms and untimeliness of that, but this time of year in Nebraska, you're going to have some more and possibly some more tonight. So, when they put their schedule together, you know, they try to anticipate those, as you know as a contractor, anticipate some of that so they don't, the whole schedule doesn't fall apart. But would you add anything else, Dennis, to that?
No, other than they've got the under drains on the, got seven out of eight of the under drain systems in the football field installed. They've got fabric over 75 percent of the, 75 percent of the field. So, the rain from the football field itself should not be too terribly nasty to them unless we get some really nasty deluges. It'll just be a matter of waiting for some drying weather so that they can get their equipment on there to get the rock hold on to it. So, the next week or 10 days will be critical. We need to get some stuff there. Carpet's supposed to be here the week of the 5th.
Any other questions? I think we're probably going to need to give up on the mic, so we're going to just speak loud. Okay, any other questions at all, Council? Okay. With that, then, we'll move on to public hearings. We have first a public hearing for Mayor and the Council to sit as a Board of Equalization for some reallocation. So, if I could, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn as Mayor and Council and reconvene as the Board of Equalization.
So, move, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If you will, please vote.
All Council members voting in the affirmative.
With that, then, we will open the public hearing to reallocate special assessments in paving District Number 493 for properties located at 316 and 320 West Norfolk Avenue and 713 and 715 West Norfolk Avenue. Clint, am I looking to you for some explanation of?
I can. What we have here is apparently the information that came from the abstractor and were reflected in the ordinance assessing those special assessments initially indicated that there was one lot when, in fact, there were two. So, in both of these instances, the property owners of 316 and 320 are the same, the property owner of 713 and 715 are the same, and they are both requesting that the special assessment be parsed between their two respective lots instead of put together in one. So, this ordinance just further breaks down those special assessments against each of the parcels.
Okay. Understood. Council, any questions at all? It is an open, an actual, we're sitting here as a, under a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak at all. Seeing none? I will close the public hearing, then, and ask for a motion as well to adjourn now as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as Mayor and Council.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second?
Motion with a second. Again, if you will, please vote.
All Council members voting in affirmative.
All right. And then I would look for consideration of Ordinance Number 5167, reallocating the special assessments in paving District 493 for properties located at 316 and 320 West Norfolk Avenue and 713 and 715 West Norfolk Avenue.
Your Honor, I would introduce Ordinance Number 5167 on first reading. Second?
Okay. Any other discussion at all? If not, short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to reallocate special assessments in paving District Number 493 established by Ordinance Number 5152, passed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Norfolk on first reading on May 21st, 2011, and adopted on March 28th, 2011, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. If you will, please vote.
All Council persons voting in affirmative. Ordinance 5167 carries on first reading.
Due to the fact this is simply housekeeping and the reason we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5167 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to suspend on second and third. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
All Council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5167 carries on second and third readings.
Okay. Next is a public hearing to comply with provisions of the Nebraska Rebuy Statute, I believe, before the consummation of purchase of property located at 309 North 5th Street by the City of Norfolk. I will open the public hearing and ask for discussion in this. You want to start off? Shane?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd be happy to.
All right.
This particular building, Supertal Hospitality, it no longer has a use for the building due to a business decision that they've made. This building came on the market and we were engaged in a conversation about the potentials for the Supertal Building in the Council's city offices. It really intrigued us because of its location, and more importantly, because of its size and its interior abilities for us to do a number of things as city staff. Once we toured it, and I know elected officials have been through it and staff has been through it a number of times, once we were able to really get our eyes on the property and look in it in the earlier career, this building, almost, for lack of better words, the building that fell from the sky for us as far as meeting the needs of city staff and meeting the needs of this community as we look back towards our council goal and city goal of citing the city offices that really have the type of talent that the community of Norfolk needs. As you know, our currently city offices are in the city auditorium. The auditorium's fine structure, built in 1939, but its functionality and its presentation to the, not only to the community, but to outsiders that come to visit our community and look towards citing new businesses and developing within our community kind of scratch their heads when we got to tour them around in three closets, hallways, up the stairs to see the outdoors director of the mayor's office, which is really a closet. And it's almost kind of embarrassing in a way that we have to do that. So, not that we're not functional at the auditorium, because we are functional. You know, we've hunted there for a long time, and city staff can be able to, you know, are pretty smart, I guess. I mean, our city offices are smart, but it's okay, a lot of circumstance as well. Again, the Supertal Building has square footage, it meets our needs. We did a needs analysis a number of years ago to start to talk about the city offices once the council set their goal. And we came up with that right around that 20,000 square foot needs analysis, space needs analysis assessment. This building is 1902. It's got room for expansion, it's got an outlot, it's got ample parking, it's got, in addition to the original Supertal building, that has a neatness about it that offers great potential to develop into a city council chamber. Some light remodeling and addition of some public restrooms, we did really turn that new portion of this building into a city council chamber and have all of our activities as far as the interaction with the staff and elected officials in the community and that process of bringing records back and forth and having all the information at our fingertips right there if we solve that issue for us as well. And its design's an office building, and that's what we need, is an office building. It has 30-plus offices there in the structure. It's almost, almost turnkey for us. We have to do some light remodeling. If the elected officials approve this tonight, we'd have to do some light remodeling as we go forward to maybe knock a wall out here or there in some of the office space and just to make it functional so we have some visualization and some, increase our communication ability with our customers. Other than that, we don't have a great deal to do if this building becomes something that elected officials must support. It does have an upstairs to it that has three fairly nice offices that are very presentable. Have, we'd be able to finally put our mayor in an office that is worthy of posting and bring all of our staff together that's out of the auditorium, about 23 individuals and possibly our IT folks out of the library. We haven't decided that yet because we haven't made a decision, but bring them all together and put them in a building that's going to increase our productivity, put our best foot forward for the community, the outside community, and be a nice addition to that campus down there. It's really kind of a governmental campus. There's a lot of, the fire station's closed, police station's closed, the library's closed, Nebraska State Government offices, probation offices, Social Security offices, a lot of the, kind of that campus look down there in that area that's still in the downtown corridor. Again, it just kind of fell out of the sky for us and it meets our needs. I believe we had a nice, strong negotiation with the current owners of the building and we came to a reasonable price that's been for you this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the building. I could probably yak about it for quite a while, but I'd be happy to, if we just have an idea, try to attempt any, ask any questions or maybe anyone in the audience.
Okay. Open meeting. Anyone that wants to come forward, we're going to ask you to sign in and speak up.
I didn't want to jump in here because I got another meeting I have to attend. My name is Ron Stoffer. Live at 604 Hesby Drive, and I did absolutely want to speak on this tonight because I think it's extremely important for our community. You know, we talk a lot about economic development. One of the things that's going to bring economic development, one of the important ingredients, is making a good impression when they come. And when you bring them to our present city offices, their first question has got to be, do I want to invest in a community that doesn't invest in itself? So, I think this is a whale of an opportunity. That building, if you're going to rebuild it now, would be in excess of $3 million. And I just think it's a very usable facility. It fits the needs. It's a real opportunity, and I think it would be sad if we pass it up because, like I say, it's a real opportunity. And the main thing I want to see is I want to see the mayor come out of the closet. Any questions? Please go for it.
I think Ron should have been on stage Saturday night.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Dennis Alster with the Norfolk Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of our 625 members and the 15,000 employees in the Norfolk area that they represent, I'm here to say that the business community is in full support of improving the city offices that we currently have right now to find a better home for the first city hall. And I would agree with the comments by Mr. Stoffer as far as that impression that it currently has with the community. We look at a lot of the things that have happened over recent years, and you look at a lot of the public and the leading organization facilities in this area. Way back, you know, years ago when the improvements were made for the Madison County Courthouse, it's still a first-class facility. You look at the improvements with the new welcome center at Northeast Community College. You look at the new bed tower, Faith Regional Health Services, and that first impression and that impact that has in our community from an economic development and from a first impression standpoint. You look at the entryway coming into, from the east on 275, and you look at the new, the investment that Nucor made in the detailing center, the investment that NPPD made with their new Norfolk Service Center. And you look at the investment that we've got coming down the road with Girt moving later this week on the site for the new Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center at 7th and Norfolk Avenue. All these organizations have done this because it's good business. It's part of what you do for improved customer service, it's part of what you do for that improved outreach to the community that you currently serve, and just as importantly for those citizens that you hope to move to town as well as those businesses you would like to attract to the community. So, we would ask, ask tonight that the mayor and the council take that next big step and move forward with this process to find a better home for our city halls. Thank you.
Dennis, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else that wants to come forward?
My name's Tom Schomer, and I live at 404 William. I'm not going to ask the mayor the same question that Mr. Stoffer did.
Proceed.
But my testimony, where I was going to take just a slightly different twist, is going to appeal to the council but as well as to the citizens. And I'll just kind of read a brief deal here. Recently, I looked up at a picture in my office of Ronald Reagan, and it kind of reminded me of what Reagan stood for. He was not someone who found ways to disagree with you, but ways, most of his life, he's been trying to find ways to agree with you. He always sought to find common ground and do things that would move the country forward. And I think this is a good example for all of us, honestly. I'll say, I'll add the privilege of attending to this dinner in 2004, and it was an event that impacted my life ever since, just what he stood for. But tonight's discussion and ultimate decision is about more than just the building. I think the focus needs to be on just the building. It's about a whole new attitude that exists in Norfolk today. I give the mayor and the municipal department credit for that and the council for working together. It's an attitude that demonstrates that Mayor Fuickman and the council members are willing to put some basketry aside and kind of work together for the common benefit of the community. And it's refreshing to me, and while it's refreshing to the community, it's also important that our community works together and gets behind the mayor and the council in full support of this decision. When this new idea first surfaced, I kind of had a problem with it. I kind of had my own opinion on it because there was some discussion in the past about possibly locating the offices down at 7th and Norfolk Avenue. I supported it, I thought that was a great idea. Then I took a tour with Shane Widener, had several discussions with the mayor about this on a trip we took to South Sioux. I'm still shaking from the road trip, by the way. Not because of her talking, but because of the road. But after that, after those discussions, it just became so clear to me that those problems were put to rest. It's a good building for a lot of good reasons. And I've heard our mayor say in the past, and I totally agree with Mayor Fuickman, that as citizens, we should all be ambassadors for our community, for Norfolk. And I think to that point, when we bring economic development prospects or job creation prospects to Norfolk, as Shane Widener said, we need to put our best foot forward. And our current city offices do not allow us to do that by inextricat imagination. In fact, it gives just the opposite. It gives, it almost gives a sense that we're regressive, and we all know that we're not regressive. So, as a longtime local businessperson, I wouldn't even consider having our employees work under the conditions that we, as a community, have our current city staff work under. And I think we can all attest to the fact that working conditions do, in fact, have a tremendous effect on employee productivity and morale. So, it's been proven over and over again that an employee is more likely to take pride in their work if they feel valued and treated and respected. So, on the subject of different city offices, it's been in the discussion for many, many, many years, and I think it's time now to make the image of our city offices be consistent with that of our community. So, in closing, with the recent passage of LV840, as well as the other voter approval, the voter approved rec plan that we've talked about tonight, I urge the council to unanimously support this purchase. I think doing so will send a consistent message to the citizens of Norfolk as well as all of the outside community that we're, in fact, open for business. So, however, our elected officials cannot do this alone. In order for them to be effective leaders, our community, there must be a commitment from our citizens to work together as a team as well. I feel there can be tremendous support and momentum gained and progress in doing so. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak? Again, we'll be back with the sign-in for us. I'll speak.
My name is Jan DiWolff, and I just came for the Supertal thing. That's all I came for. But my question is, and probably he might be the one to answer it, the guy in the blue suit, is I understand that the purchase price is 1.75 million, but I want to know what the cost will be for the remodel. Do you know?
The purchase price is 1.7, as proposed, is 1.75 million. When we put our initial numbers together for the remodel cost, it's kind of a hard number to, you know, as any remodel is, until you start actually moving walls and pulling ceilings and putting in bathrooms, you know, there's, it's kind of a hard number to put on. But one of the major costs that we have is we have to put fiber, communication fiber to the building so we are able to link into our fiber network across the community. And that estimate is about $70,000 just there. And then the bathrooms and the remodel costs, you know, it could be arranged anywhere from, oh, additional $100,000 to additional $180,000 or so. So, what we're looking at is upwards of maybe $250,000 more dollars. That's our hope, anyway. And I will say, and it's a great question, ma'am, I appreciate that, we did have an appraisal done on the building, and that appraisal came back from more, see appraisal is at 1.8, just over 1.8 million dollars for the building. Supertal really isn't interested in moving much of their office furniture out of there and going through the hassle of doing all that and having a yard sale, for lack of better words, on some of the equipment and desk and chairs and the things that are currently in the building, so they offered to leave that as part of the purchase price, and that's their intention, and we're very willing to accept that as well because, again, it'd almost be turnkey for us, and we can go in there and get to work in fairly readily fashion.
So, so then?
Property, we're going to, property tax is what we'll use, but no new property tax. We're going to use the council's priority money. They have $400,000 that they set aside a number a couple of years ago to accommodate their priority projects, and we anticipate using property, those dollars to pay for it. Council priority project money, which is property tax, which has already been levied, so no new, no new property taxes would be involved in the purchase of the building.
That's a lot of money for starting a property tax increase. That's a lot of money. So, are you telling me that that fund has had a lot of money in it?
It, the property tax sets aside $400,000 a year, where it's 100, it's going to cost 100, approximately $150,000 worth of dollars to fund the bond per year, so, yes.
Every year with the plan?
Right.
So, that $400 you're paying every year? For in the house every year?
That's correct.
Well, I probably am not going to state this eloquently as to why it came and ended with me, but our friends are my age, you know, we're senior citizens, and we've talked a lot about this since that became a possibility, and I think it's a great idea, and so do all of our friends. So, this doesn't get put to a vote, right?
This council?
No, I mean.
Yep.
Nope. Matter. Oh. Anyway, I just think it's a great idea. I think it's a nice building. I was just talking to Mr. Walters about it before the meeting started, and he started telling me places that they could convert into spaces that you need, and I like the idea. So, I'm hoping that you get a lot of support. I am disappointed that there isn't more attendance from the community, get feedback from them, but if I can speak for a whole bunch of us elderly people, I think it sounds like a good idea.
Thank you. We appreciate hearing you. Anyone else that wants to come forward tonight and speak?
Mayor, I just want to reiterate, too, that like Shane said, that money is already being collected, so there will be no new property. being collected, so there will be no new property tax.
How many years have we had that now? Two? Am I?
Three.
Two or three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Kelly Walters. I am currently president of Supertel. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about the process here and how this came about. Probably about a year ago, in a conversation with a local businessman luncheon, out of the blue, he said, "What are you going to do with that office building?" Which, at that time, we hadn't really considered yet a downsizing, and I said, "Well, why, you know, why do you ask?" And he said, "Well, I think that would make an excellent office building for the city." And I said, "Well, if we get to that point at some point down the road, I'll telephone." And so, I called him about November of last year, when we'd made the decision to change management companies, which would reduce employment within our building. And he made contact with Mayor Fuickman, and subsequent to that call, I think we had a meeting sometime around Thanksgiving with Mr. Weidner and the mayor and Gary Miller, and began discussions about where we, when we thought we would be looking to sell this property. We discussed, at that time, maybe some valuations, but more than anything, they wanted to come and see the building, took a tour of the property, actually several tours of the property to get their arms around just what exactly was there. And for those of you that haven't been in the building, it was originally built in 1990. There was a second addition put on about 1995, I believe, as Shane indicated, just under 20,000 square feet. We believe it's been well-maintained, there's been very little construction done in the building subsequent to its building, so it's not cobbled up inside at all. It probably could use a coat of paint in some places, but anyway, it seemed like an appropriate property for the needs, as we understood the city being. And we are not leaving town, by the way. We are going to downsize to about 7,000 square feet. We haven't quite decided where that's going to be, those discussions are going on. And so, we would look to probably be out of there sometime late August, early September timeframe, and we'll probably still continue to employ about 23 people in the community. At the peak, between us and Royco, who is really not a Norfolk-based company, we were employing about 37 people. So, we have downsized, that's not much fun, but nevertheless, I think that was necessary, and we're happy to see this building going to, if we can get that to that point, going to the city. I think we'd be quite happy with it. And as Shane said, with the excess ground to build, it could serve your needs, hopefully for a long time to come. I should say, we started at a price much higher than 1.75, and through several conversations with Mr. Weidner, we, my last, I think, offer was about 1.8, and he wouldn't budge off his 1.75. So, we settled there, and, yeah, again, had hoped to do better, but was respectful of the position, and I knew I was risking the deal if I tried to go any higher, so kudos to Mr. Weidner for his negotiating abilities. But, anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions if that's of interest to anyone in the audience about our situation, so.
Questions at all for any of, anyone, from anyone? Kelly, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you, and I will say, I don't know that you were any easier to negotiate with as well, so.
Well.
Amen, Mayor, amen.
Yeah.
Very joyful. Not usually is that the case, but I've never felt contentious at all.
Yep, I agree. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak tonight? Okay. Hearing none, then? I'd like to close the public hearing and see if we can have some discussion among this council and move forward.
Your honor, I'd like to make the motion to direct staff to proceed with the steps necessary to acquire the Supertel building.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion at all?
I just want to say that we have been working on this pretty hard. Shane did a great job of negotiating, because we were behind him 100% telling him not to go too high. So, he did, I think, a good job of what we asked him to do, and getting the filing cabinets and some of the things included is going to be a big help, because, again, that would have been added more money on there. We've tried to put this in the budget, we know how much money we're collecting.
Yep.
You can't go over that figure, so it all fits right now, and I just want to say that if everything holds up the way it is, we'll be in pretty good shape with this.
Thank you, councilman. Others?
I guess I would just echo Dave's comments. I really appreciate the work that Shane did on this. You know, anytime you're talking about taxpayer dollars, there's a lot of responsibility for the elected officials. I look at it as if I was spending my own money, because technically, I am. But I thought that we came to a pretty good price, and I, too, think that there's some merit in the contents that will be left in the building that will save us a lot, a lot of costs, save the taxpayer dollars. And I guess of the four standalone properties that we have toured since I've been on the council, this is heads above the other three. There's no comparison. I guess the other thing I would add is, we currently have these city council chambers, and that gives us a little more flexibility. Maybe we wouldn't necessarily have to remodel that property right away. We could do it when it was beneficial to the taxpayers and still use this property for the time being, but it just opens our possibilities. But I've heard nothing but good comments from my constituents, and I think it's a great fit for Norfolk.
Ken?
And I guess I'd like to echo that. This is one thing that, you know, most of the time, I think we can attest to a lot of the comments we receive, is generally when people are impacted negatively. And I was extremely surprised at the outpouring of support that was relayed to me from different constituents, either via phone calls, emails, meeting on the street, and whatever. I feel there's a tremendous amount of support out there, as there should be for this. Again, as was pointed out by other citizens earlier, you know, we were a 21st century community, living in a early 20th century structure, and be it as may, there were just things that we had outgrown and we had proceeded forward from the facility. I think this is, as the citizens have noted, is a great avenue for us to be going down, and we'd be remiss in our duties of not being good stewards with the taxpayer's dollars if we did not proceed forward with this, so. And some of the constituents had asked me what's going to happen with the existing auditorium, and, you know, other than that, the staff won't necessarily all be there, it's still going to be a facility that we, as a city, I believe, are going to maintain and keep our hands on that way. It does serve other purposes, so.
Certainly. Thanks, Councilman Langy. Anyone else that wants to add to? Okay. If not, then, are you ready to vote? Please do.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. We appreciate the input, and again, as Councilman Langy said, certainly we had a lot of support out there on the street, but you being here tonight means an awful lot to all of us guys, so, thanks. You certainly may.
My brother, born and raised here, thirty years out of Denver, he was just here, and he's looking around town. He said this city's looking good.
Thank you, thank you. I hope the chamber hears that as well and passes that on. I know that there's been a lot of effort through that group, too, so. Thanks for being here tonight, folks. We now have a public hearing to receive a report on the findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee. Again, required by statute. Am I looking to you, Randy, to help us there?
Yes, yes, your honor. As you mentioned, this is a requirement of statutes. Every six months, the Citizens Advisory Review Committee must meet, according to statutes, and review the operation of the city's economic development program, the LB-840 program, as most people call it. And their job is to report back to the council on any suggestions they might have in operation of the program. This is our second meeting, and it's kind of difficult for them to report back on operations of the program, because we haven't had any money up to this point in time to do anything with the LB-840 program. But they did meet on June 13th, as required by state law, and they reviewed several items, and they did have some suggestions, and their report is included in the agenda packet. And at that meeting, all of the Citizens Advisory Review Committee members, or CARC members, were there, which is Bill Canham, Cindy Morrow, Jim Mangles, Tammy Langen Young, and Jan Einspar. If you look at the report, it's in closure 20 in the agenda packets. I thought when we met in June, I'd be able to tell them we had about $100,000 in the fund that we could now do something with, but at that point in time, we only had about $3,000, because there was an error in the county's accounting system, and the property tax that should have went to the Economic Development Fund got allocated out to the other taxing entities that were taxing city property. So, we didn't get anything in May to speak of. We have, however, as of Friday, gotten the June payment, which corrected the mistake that was made in the prior month. We now have about $235,000, $236,000 in that economic development fund. So, there is now, for the first time, as of Friday, some money that can actually be put to use for the LB-840 program. Another thing the committee looked at was the economic development program guidelines the council approved with Resolution 2011-8 back on May 2nd. They went over these in some detail. They felt that the anti-piracy provisions in the city's economic development plan should be incorporated into the guidelines, and if applicable, into the documents we ask the applicants to sign. I think that's probably a good suggestion. We'll look at doing that as we go forward. The guidelines specify that eligible businesses pay the county's average wage level. On the Department of Labor's website, that is $15.03. Most of the committee members felt that was too high, which is kind of the opposite at one meeting, as with some other business leaders around the community who felt it was about right. They asked that Elkhorn Valley Economic Development Council contact the Department of Labor and see how that was calculated and determine if that's really the number we want to use, or if $15.03 should be adjusted somewhere or another. Elkhorn Valley, Candace, made that contact with Elkhorn Valley Economic Development Council. We're going to be talking to them a little bit further to determine exactly what makes that up and try to determine whether that's the appropriate number to be using, or if we should be using something else. We also discussed LB-471, which is a bill the legislature passed this year, changing eligible businesses for use of the economic development program monies. That is not yet into effect, so we couldn't yet fund those businesses, new businesses that they made eligible. Basically, they made retail eligible for first-class cities. Before that, cities our size could not use any of it for retail. Now, under LB-471, you can use up to 40% of your annual revenue of the economic development program in any five-year period, in any year, and then 20% in any five-year period for retail businesses. We kind of get there through our plan, through the back door. That wasn't eligible use at the time we drafted the plan, but we put a little catch-all in our plan that was approved by the voters, that said any other businesses deemed qualifying by the legislature. So, as the legislature makes changes to what a qualifying business is, that comes under our plan as a qualifying business, and if we want to, we can change our guidelines to allow that, because our guidelines also refer to any similar language of that back to our plan, as any business that's eligible under the city's plan. Committee members felt the focus should not be on retail, however, but felt that should not be ruled out. There might be instances when we would want to look at retail. But, once again, they felt the focus should not be on retail. They had a lot of discussion about their responsibilities, what is it they're supposed to do, and how, where are they supposed to go about doing it. They requested a checklist of what they're supposed to examine as they review the award of funds to business, and the ongoing monitoring of that business, determining if the business meets the criteria for the use of those funds. For example, the number of jobs created and retained, wages paid, et cetera. We're going to try and develop a checklist for them to use. And then, another thing they asked when we met back in December, was that we survey some of our size cities and see how their LB-840 programs are incorporating the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. And I surveyed all 20 Nebraska first-class cities with economic development programs. Ten of those responded. Those 10 first-class cities, there was not much consistency as to how their CARCs were operating, so that didn't give us any real recipe that we could follow and say, "Okay, this is how it's done out there." It's kind of all over the board. And then, finally, the Elkhorn Valley Economic Development Council representatives were there, both Candace and Michaela, and they gave the committee a brief update on a project being currently considered for funding of the LB-840 program. And that's the synopsis of the committee's meeting on June 13th. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at all, council?
Randy, that wage, that average wage, would that be a total compensation number? I mean, that does seem kind of high. Would that include all your benefits?
It does not include benefits, the way I understand it from Candace's contact with the Department of Labor. It does, however, include overtime. And what they did, if I understand right, was took total wages reported in the county, and they divided it by number of employees in the county, assuming that they worked 40 hours a week. So, you've got some people that are working way less than 40 hours, part-time people, and that will bias that number up. But on the other hand, you've got people working more than 40 hours a week, which will bias that number the other way. So, I think we need to do some work. I'm not sure if there's a better number out there, or if it's as good as it's going to get, or...
What was the date range on that? Do you know, Randy?
Say again.
The date range? I mean, is that numbers from 2010? 2010? Do you know?
Yeah, that number was, I think, if I remember right, the fourth quarter of 2010's number, if I remember right.
Pretty interesting.
They said those are done quarterly, and they said there was another quarter's information available now. That wasn't on their website when I looked at it before. I'll look to see if they've actually updated their website yet or not, but they did say there was the next quarter, but quarter's information is available.
Any other questions at all? I appreciate your meeting with them, and certainly, you know, to that, to those five members that have stepped up and taken on the responsibility, so continue your efforts and appreciate the report there. With that, I'll close this hearing, and again, if you'll just express to them our appreciation. So, are we ready to move on to the regular agenda, then, looking for consideration of ordinance number 5168, authorizing issuance of $3,550,000 of combined utilities revenue refunding bonds to refund $305,000 of Series 2002 combined utilities revenue refunding bonds, and $3,580 of Series 2002B combined utilities revenue refunding bonds?
Your honor, I would like to move consideration of ordinance number 5168.
Second.
Have a motion with a second? Discussion? Who do I look for here to? Do we need any, any questions that you might have on this? Obviously, we're talking some big numbers here. Can you give us a short explanation on it, Randy, what you're doing?
Certainly, I can. This is a refunding that's being done for an interest rate savings. The maturities are going to stay approximately where they're at now. We're going to realize a almost $265,000 savings in debt service as a result of this, and the present value of that debt service savings is over a quarter of a million dollars. And net present value benefit of the refunding is 6.5% of the refunded principal, and that's one of the, we have a policy on, we have a debt policy that's in the budget. If you guys look at it every year, and basically, it says, once that number gets above 5%, we'd really seriously consider doing a refunding, and this number's clearly above that, meets our criteria. It's refunding somewhat more, the refunding bonds were refunding somewhat more than the amount of the refunding bonds, but that's primarily because of the accrued debt service savings to date. savings to date. There's about $350,000 of that that's being put in here, plus an additional $50-some-thousand to pay the issuance cost. So we're not issuing more new bonds than we have old bonds. And pretty straightforward refunding, and I think well worth doing.
If no further questions, I'd look for a short title.
An ordinance authorizing issuance of combined revenue refunding bonds, Series 2011, of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of $3,550,000, pledging and hypothecating the revenues and earnings of the waterworks plant and water system, sanitary sewer plant and sewer system, and solid waste transfer facilities owned by the city for the payment of said bonds, providing for the issuance and sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser thereof, providing for the disposition of the proceeds of said bonds, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
Okay. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5168 carries on first reading.
I'm going to guess that these probably should be passed on second and third to get that interest rate, so I'm going to ask that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5168 on second and third.
Second.
Motion with a second that we suspend second and third. Again, any discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5168 carries on second and third.
Okay. And next, last on the regular agenda, then, will be, along with that, is consideration of a resolution, number 2011-12, calling the $305,000 of outstanding Series 2002 Combined Utilities Revenue Refunding Bonds, and the $3,580,000 of outstanding Series 2002B Combined Utilities Revenue Bonds for redemption on July 26, 2011.
Your Honor, I'd introduce Resolution 2011-12.
Second.
We have a motion with a second? Hearing no further discussion? I'm going to ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2011-12 is adopted.
Okay. Tonight is public comment period, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and address the council and mayor in any way, we would just ask you to come forward, state your name for us, give us your thoughts, comments, whatever, and I will tell you that there'll be no action taken, but we'll be more than glad to listen.
Your Honor, city council members, thank you for the privilege to come before you and speak tonight. Mr. Faust, you are my representative, and I remember when you came by the last election cycle, and you knocked at my door. I didn't have a chance to talk to you at the time, but I would love to sit down with you again whenever you got the time, and talk with you a little bit more about what you think might be healthy for our community.
All right.
For the council in general, I would like to bring up an issue that kind of came to a head in our city two months ago, when Planned Parenthood announced their plans to open up a clinic here in Norfolk, Nebraska. I know there's been several articles and letters to the editor in the newspaper, but what I'd like to bring out is that usually when there's an actual news article about Planned Parenthood, it's usually slanted in favor of Planned Parenthood and abortion. We've seen some recent articles in the news during the last few months about how Planned Parenthood has some problems in some other communities throughout the U.S. And I would like to bring a suggestion to you. I believe that those are not isolated exceptions to the rule. I believe those are actually systemic problems within their business model. So I'd also like, and in consideration of, I know that the news media tries to present a fair case, but I would like to present to you the option that the other side of the abortion and Planned Parenthood issue is rarely heard from, if it's presented, it's rarely presented fairly. My own experience is, I've been in a situation where the news media did not report it fairly, and so I would like to present to you the other side of the case, if I may. Planned Parenthood is the largest abortion provider in the United States. They provide over 300,000 abortions every year. What exactly is an abortion? What is the unborn? Well, I would love to talk with each of you individually, as a council, whatever your preference would be, about answering those two questions, because I don't believe most Americans really think about them. We know that life begins at the moment of conception. We know that everybody gets their own unique DNA at the moment of conception. That's standard in biology curricula. It's nothing new. We know that the government and courts regularly accept DNA evidence to identify individual human beings. So from these simple facts, I would contend that we already know that an individual human life begins at conception. It doesn't occur at the moment of birth. It does not occur at some magical moment during pregnancy. It actually occurs at conception. So abortion kills something. More correctly, abortion kills someone. Planned Parenthood has abortion as a key component of their business. Just over two weeks ago, some friends and I asked people at the festival at Skyview Lake what they thought about Planned Parenthood coming here. Ninety out of 92 people that we asked were very quick to say they think it's a bad idea. As an American, I agree with them, because our country was founded on the principle of, among other things, that all men are created equal with the right to pursue life. We're about to celebrate a holiday commemorating that. As a Christian, I also agree with them, because God gives us commands in the Bible that call for us to protect the weak and defenseless. So to abort, as I understand it, and what I would like to submit to you, to abort someone is to trample on the rights of the weakest, the most defenseless members of our society. Now, do we really want to be known as a city where Planned Parenthood has come? Do we want to be known as a city that promotes abortion in Nebraska as part of a slice of the good life? Do we want to be known as a city in Nebraska that promotes abortion as part of being a community of strength, where only the strong survive? I don't think we do. I hope you don't. And I understand that in our country's current legal setting, abortion is legal. That does not mean we have to promote it. My request to you as a council, and I don't know all the loopholes that you might be, have to work through, but my request to you as a council would be that you would consider preventing, or doing what you can to prevent Planned Parenthood from coming to our community. That's all I have to say. Do you have any questions for me?
I would ask you to do me one favor, and that's to state your name and address...
I'm sorry. Richard Zimmerman.
Okay.
I live at 1702 Bel Air Road here in Norfolk.
Very good. All right. And you did sign in for us, Richard?
Yes, I did.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to ask you to do the same thing, if you would, for me. Please state your name, address, and we'll have you sign in.
My name is Rod Hughes. I live at 2514 West Side here in Norfolk. Twenty years ago or more, I talked with Mike Noon about a new city office building when I sat on the city council, and I want to applaud you and thank you. I didn't think I was going to live long enough to see it completed, and it is great to think about, you know. I agree with every, I didn't speak before, because I agreed with what was being said, so I didn't have anything to add. But I do want to thank you, because it's been on the agenda for an awful long time.
Thanks for your support, Rod. Appreciate that. Okay. Anyone else that wants to be heard from tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. And I'll second it.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.